All right, welcome and good evening to the school committee meeting of January 11th, 2023. We are recording this meeting and it is, I think, being broadcast on WHCA. As we start all meetings, if we could start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pleasure, this is your flyer by the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, do have a reasonably busy agenda tonight, but we are going to start with executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if in open meeting they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. Tonight specifically, we're discussing the WAEA collective bargaining. We anticipate we will reconvene around 6:45, but that could be shorter, it could be longer, it's as long as the committee needs. So I think we have everyone outside, but I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote. Fred, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I, sorry, I should have been, so your vote on the roll call is?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session.
Okay.
All right, welcome back. We are not at recess. I think we're going to take a few things out of order because we have some folks here, so I'll let Jeff kind of go where he wants to go.
So can we go to public comment first?
Oh yes, we should do that. Oh yes, because I know there's at least one person here for public comment. So is anyone here for public comments? Yes, I think you're at least the one. I was trying to skip over it because I know what you're going to say and I wasn't excited about it.
Oh, Chris, you can't say no.
Hi, everyone, I'm Allison Dillon, here on behalf of the Hanson PTO. Just wanted to come and tell you a little bit about the polar plunge that we're going to be hosting on February 5th. So I know some of you are new, but most of you have seen and heard about this event before. Many have participated, but we are excited to get down to Camp Quaney and hopefully have many community members plunge into the water to help raise money for the PTO. How it works is if you do sign up to plunge, it's $30, and then we send you a pledge page where you can get support from family, friends, community members, et cetera, to join your pledge and donate if they wish. If you can't plunge, I totally understand, but we would still love for you to come and support, you know, come see the event, see what it's all about, cheer on, you know, your fellow, perhaps colleagues. Jeff has already signed up, so I think he's beat everyone to it this year, but, you know, happy to answer any questions if you have any, and we would love for you to join. I know Chris has done it, Hillary.
On my birthday last year, too.
I know, it's not on your birthday this year, it's the day before, right?
There's a temperature requirement this year? It can't be 12?
I know, last year it was, I think, the coldest we've had. Hopefully this year won't be too bad. It's been pretty mild, right? Although tonight it's snowing out there. But I have some flyers if anyone's interested. There are direct links on our Facebook page for the PTO to sign up. It's all done through Eventbrite, so if you go to Eventbrite.com and search for Hanson PTO, you'll find it, but you will see it on our Facebook page as well. So that was really it, short and sweet, but if anyone has questions, happy to answer them.
Chair?
Yes, Fred.
Have a question when appropriate?
Is what?
I have a question for Allison.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Is your dad doing it?
He has not signed up yet, but the more people that harass him, maybe we can get him in the water this year. He skipped last year, we weren't happy about it, but...
We should all still have his, like, cellphone.
You'll all have to text him, yeah.
He'll be there for cable TV, probably.
He will be there doing community access, for sure.
Now, he needs to be in a bathing suit and a bathing cap and get in and get wet.
I don't know if I want to see that. But I'll take the bathing suit.
Thank you for coming, and I'm sure you'll see some brave souls there, so.
I hope so. Well, thank you for having me.
Of course.
Thank you.
Anyone else here, any other public comment? Anyone else want to make us go in really cold water? Okay, great. All right.
So I'm going to bounce around a little bit. We have, we have a couple of students here today. Every year, the Mass Association of School Superintendents gives, provides me an opportunity to award two awards of excellence to two of our top students, and we have them here today. So I'm going to read their certificates and then ask them to come and get a nice photo op and be recognized by the committee. So Certificate of Academic Excellence presented to Leah D. Cataldo, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence and witness thereof the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of the schools hereunto affixiated. So Leah, congratulations. Certificate of Academic Excellence presented to Noah J. Roberts, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence and witness thereof, whereof the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of the schools hereunto affixiated. Noah, congratulations. You guys, committee, you have any questions for our two academic excellence winners? Put them on the spot.
Any future plans you want to share?
Come on up.
Only if you want to share, you don't have to.
I will be, I am applying to colleges in the process, but sadly, I won't know until probably around April where I'm going, so we'll have to check back in then. Thank you.
Which one are you hoping for? We'll, this is a positive vibe.
Whatever lets me in. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Congratulations to both of you. Thanks for representing our school so well, and we'll see you at graduation. Next item, we have our student advisory, students here, Mr. Forth.
Hello, you guys, if you want to take the floor?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. As you probably already know, my name is Riley Getchel, and I'm here with the Student Advisory Committee, and tonight we've decided to focus on a big budget line item for this spring, and that is adding foreign language back to our middle schools. I would say that foreign language has been an invaluable piece of my education here at Women Hanson, and being able to continue foreign language into senior year and being able to take a college-level course of foreign language before I'm even in college has been incredible. I don't even plan on taking the AP Spanish exam this year, but just being able to continue to learn at a college level before entering higher education has been incredible, and I would say that it brings a much higher academic standard to our middle school. I remember being so excited to be picked for Spanish in seventh grade, and all my friends got to come to class with me, and we would get out of class and we would just keep saying our vocab words because we were so excited to be learning something new. And all of us are going to speak a little on our experience with foreign language in our schools. The grades below me and below Emma and Chloe haven't been able to experience this, and they're most likely going to see the effects of this in their college applications and not being able to have that advanced level of foreign language. So we think that it is a huge piece that we need to absolutely add back to our school curriculum.
Hi, I'm Emma. I just wanted to share one of my real-world experiences with you guys about foreign language. I have a little brother who's in the DeValle Elementary School, and he's fantastic. He always comes home asking, he asks me to teach him Portuguese all the time. "Emma, please teach me Portuguese. Emma, can you teach me Portuguese?" Like, I don't know how to, I don't know how to speak Portuguese, I'm sorry, Mikey, but I can teach you some Spanish of what I know. And he, I asked him one day, I was like, "Why do you keep asking me to teach you Portuguese?" And he goes, "Well, my friend, he speaks Portuguese." And I'm like, "Your friend?" And he goes, "Yeah, in class, we play together." He goes, "But I don't know how to talk to him, and I want to have a conversation." And I was like, "Oh, Mikey, you want to talk to him?" He's like, "Of course." And I'm like, "Oh, well, we can try to help you learn some Portuguese." So I really think, like, knowing that he really is striving as a first grader, first, second grader, even my sister, who's in fourth grade, wants to learn Spanish. She asks me all the words. "Emma, you take Spanish class?" I'm like, "Yeah, I'm in Spanish." The elementary schoolers, which is surprising because of such a young age they are, they're really striving to learn these new languages, which is, I think, amazing. It really, it activates all of the different strategies in your brain, and it just helps a lot. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chloe. I also wanted to add on about the foreign language. I feel like it is important that we should have these availabilities to us so that we can increase, like, our thinking. It does help with cognitive abilities, and being able to learn these languages at a younger age helps become more fluent in it. So I feel like it is great for us to maybe add that into elementary schools and middle schools and keep it going for AP classes in high school. Thank you.
Hi again, I'm Noah, and kind of a foreign language adjacent subject that I wanted to touch on was more regarding the culture of the school, and this kind of translates to the middle and elementary schools. But as our schools and our towns in general have become more diverse with different color, different backgrounds, different cultures, things like that, I think that there's an increasing need to have some type of education on these different cultures, make these people feel represented. Because through my experience in both middle, elementary school and high school, there's been very little education at all regarding these. And these could be cultures from all different backgrounds, but what I've really had is just one model with of specific parts of American history and not much outreach besides that. And I think this gives us a great opportunity for not just the teachers, but for the students of those cultures as well, to express how they feel. And this kind of touches back to, I reached out on my Instagram account before and asked for feedback from students throughout the summer, and a lot of them were describing how their cultures felt underrepresented at the high school specifically, and that they were even just feeling, like, biased within the high school, whether from students or things like that. So I just feel like integrating some type of education on the excellence of these cultures and acceptance of everybody would lead to a more welcoming community overall, which could definitely help with these bias and racial discrimination issues, which have seemed to become more prevalent over the past few years, which is kind of scary. But I feel like education and just learning from each other, and not just from teachers as well, could be a huge implementation for this. So I don't know whether that's an educational thing, working that into the structure, or just having students talk to students and understand that these are real people, these are your peers, and you can learn so much from them. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Any questions for any of them?
If you guys don't mind, you know, I just want to say it's great hearing your guys' perspective and just hearing your feedback and your personal anecdotes. It helps, gives us, you know, the idea of what we're here and what we're trying to accomplish when we go through this budget season, and hearing just not only the impact of bringing back foreign language, but also how it impacts the student body and their ability to connect with one another and grow, and also just not only how it prepares them as an individual in their life, but also, you know, through career preparation as well, whether it's through a vocational job or having, you know, something ready for a college application. Obviously, it's something we need to consider going forward, and when we take a vote on the budget come March, you know, I think we need to think about what the services we're trying to offer and how it impacts the student body overall and the long-term vision and what we're trying to accomplish as a committee. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think it's great you shared this. We can talk about it as committee members, but to hear from you, how you're impacted and things like that, it really hits home. So thank you for sharing your stories, it means a lot, and it should resonate with all of us when we vote, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Awesome. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, as Riley mentioned, if you're a junior or younger at the high school right now, that you never had a full complement of foreign language in our middle school. So that was, you were in seventh grade when they had one year of Spanish or half-year, and it was that 2019 spring when the budget needed to be reduced or changed in a sense that the 2019, 2020 year was when there was no foreign language teachers at Hanson Middle or Whitman Middle. So, and it remains at this point. So it's something that, thank you for reminding us of, and we'll look at, because I think when George had mentioned, you know, in your related arts group, bringing some components of that back, I think one of my comments was, you know, build the foundation, and that's what Emma was talking about, first grade, right? I would never want to leave a group of kids out, but, you know, to get, again, maybe seventh or eighth grade, it'd be great if we could do it for all, but really building a foundation, if we can offer something to at the younger age where they, they're, they want to do it, they really are open to it. So, thank you.
Was I was a victim of budget cuts?
Yes.
And it was in the middle school?
Two, two, two pieces of that. Yes, budget, but second, we had one foreign language teacher at Whitman Middle and one at Hanson Middle. That meant mostly every student at Hanson Middle received Spanish in eighth grade.
Yep.
And half of the Whitman School eighth grade did.
How many years was it?
Just one.
It went for one year and then it was cut the neck off?
No, no, it's been going on for, for a year.
Multiple years before that, alright.
Cut it in 19. Yes.
So, in 2003, Spanish and French were cut from, out of the middle schools completely. It was a, it was not only a global studies class, but it was also the language. And then in 2009, we reinstituted it with one teacher sharing at both schools, and we got it all the way up to one teacher at each school. However, when you look at it from an equitable standpoint, as Jeff said, it couldn't be there for everyone, so it became, who do we select to go into it? A lot of it became, I'm just going to say, a lot of it became political and a lot of it became an issue. The difference in class sizes allowed four sections to happen at Hanson Middle School and only two sections to happen at the Whitman Middle School. But you took it over two years. So you would take it late on top of what's called a related arts schedule. So instead of, like, a study hall or a class or a phys ed, you'd get that. And then you would take Spanish 1 Part A as a seventh grader, Spanish 1 Part B as an eighth grader. If you remember what we talked about in the summer, which we haven't put in the budget officially yet, is the promote, the goal that we worked on in our subgroup, which talked about not only bringing robotics into a K-8 curriculum through our library and media specialists who are already there, but also a virtual online piece of Spanish that can be taken during middle school so that it can be completed. And then we would hire one teacher, and that one teacher would be able to split the time to see the groups. You would do ingenuity for Spanish 1, which would also have on-demand tutoring through the company, and then you would meet a couple of times a week with the Spanish teacher live in person that we would hire for both schools. I want to remind you that the total approximate cost of it all was $158,500 or $160,000, and then of that was $38,000 approximately for the Sphero Robotics, and the rest was to purchase the Spanish online, and then the investment of a human teacher to go from there.
One more quick one.
Yeah.
And then the freshman year, you would start at Spanish 2?
At freshman year, anyone who completed it would start at Spanish 2. It does solve the equity issue in the sense that it is open to all. Everybody has Chromebooks now, we would purchase it for everyone, and then we would have the ability to do it. Because you would need a minimum of five, if you were to implement it full scale, we'd have to make it an academic subject, like English, math, science, social studies, and now Spanish, to make it equitable, we could do it. However, you now have, at the Hanson Middle School, three separate schedules, a fifth grade schedule, which is different, a sixth and seventh, and then an eighth grade schedule with five academics. At the Whitman Middle School, you could still just have two schedules, sixth and seventh, and then five academics with Spanish and eighth. You could do it in one year, but you're looking at three to five staff members, because one Spanish at Hanson, two Spanish at Whitman, and then a corresponding extra reading specialist for each school, because there are some students who cannot grasp that level due to their needs, that you would still have to have a place to put them. We talked about this a lot.
Well, I'm sorry, George.
I can say it, right? Thank you.
I just want to thank you all. It's great to have you guys back and hear from you. To me, the most powerful part of what you do is bring the voices of your peers here, right? And Noah particularly, that for you to be considering that as a way to build positive culture, make people feel like they belong and have a voice, outstanding work, and we look forward to more of that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Very well, guys.
Thank you.
What do you want to go next?
Yes, congratulations, it's amazing.
Brockton. Gabby? Right now, I'm going to ask Gabby from our Whitman-Will-Brockton area Prevention Collaborative Student Survey request. She has a survey request for you. We've done the survey multiple years, and she's here again.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Gabby Sullivan, and I am a grants manager for High Point Treatment Center, and what that really means is that we get to support Whitman-Hanson-Will, the local substance use prevention coalition, with grant funding to do what we need to do to address youth substance use in the community. So today, I am just requesting approval to survey students again this year. We do it annually. Some years, I've reported back out results to you all and then seek approval throughout the year to survey again. So the survey is, should be in your packets. It's administered by my evaluation team, Kelly Research Associates. It's been transferred to being online since COVID, so students receive it online. It's confidential, administered by school staff, and it takes about five to 10 minutes to take it. It's administered to about, to all students in grades six through 12. And parents receive a consent form before they take it with the help of the principals, and then we receive the results back, share them back with you, and use it for basically strategic planning for the year, having important conversations with students, like in SAD, and they get to really plan their initiatives in partnership with my team to do the work that we do. So my, my ask of you all tonight is to be able to survey students again this year around February, March.
What grade get this survey?
Six through 12.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Fred.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this survey as we've done every year, and also point out the fact that it's done, when we get reports or any analysis, it's completely anonymous. We have just results, nothing else, no identification.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, well, roll call vote. Fred?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris? Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so you're all set.
Thanks, Gabby. Look forward to hearing back from you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bounce around a little bit more. Dr. Jones, High School Program of Studies. In your packet, you have the Program of Studies and Dr. Jones's proposals. I believe that were approved by a school council yesterday?
Correct. If you look at the memo that you've been given for the Program of Studies, I will jump around a little bit, but just in an effort to simplify it. So I'll, I'll call out some numbers, and there are some batch things that are happening. If you look at number four through 11, and then you look at number 19 through 24, those are all just normal rotations of courses so that students have a larger selection of courses to choose from, and that they have a better opportunity to get different experiences as they go through high school. That has to do with staffing issues and the ability to fill classes and choices. If you look at number, I'll hit these individually. Number one, you notice that we removed examinations and assessment. That was a holdover from when we got rid of midterm exams and finals. Midterm exams and finals are not coming back, they're removed permanently, so we took it out of the Program of Studies to avoid confusion and have erroneous information here. If you look at 12 and 13, those are also removed courses. One is the French practicum and one is the Spanish practicum. It seems like that happens to be a common theme tonight. Those are removed because that is offered after students have received a certain amount of instruction, those courses have reached a certain level, and they go a step further with it. With students coming into the high school, starting at French and Spanish 1, they don't have the opportunity to hit those levels, so we don't have numbers for those courses, and if we don't run those courses repeatedly, we don't put them in the Program of Studies. So that's why we're removing them from the Program of Studies. If you look at number 28, health has been removed. We're removing health from the curriculum, from the Program of Studies, as a standalone, single course. And I'll explain what we're doing with number 25, 26, and 27 with that removal. What we've done is, we've taken the health course and broken it up into two different courses, one with appropriate topics for your freshmen that come in. Typically, health is taken as a requirement freshman year, and we've broken that between freshman and sophomore year. So we have the topics that are appropriate for your 14, 15-year-olds, and the topics that are appropriate for your 15, 16-year-olds. We have then combined those with PE courses. It's not going to turn into a full-year course, it's still going to remain a semester course, but what that has allowed us to do is create the freshman course, freshman fitness and wellness. So that course will incorporate and fulfill the PE requirement for students and the health requirement, or the first part of the health requirement for students. Then in 10th grade, when they enter into 10th grade, they still need that second component of health class, and so we take that and pair it with a PE class, but what it also allows us to do is give students a choice for PE or a clearer choice. The two courses that you see, 26 and 27, is our 10th grade courses, you have Wellness 2. One is net sports and cooperative games for a PE track. Those are your students that are focused and drawn more towards your competitive games, net games, sports, so forth. Number 27 is Wellness 2, fitness, dance, and yoga, and that's more of a wellness track for students that are more interested in moving that way instead of your competitive sports avenue. That's done a couple of things. So that's the creation of three new courses by getting rid of the health course. What that allows us to do is the school, is it frees up the freshman schedule. When freshmen come into the high school, their first year is pretty much scripted. There's not a lot of room for choice or anything like this. By doing this move, we actually open up their schedule so that they have a choice for different courses their freshman year coming in. In conjunction with the idea that by doing this, we can now also assign a seminar, which is the fancy word for study hall, basically, we can assign a seminar to every freshman coming in the building so that it's more of a soft landing for freshmen who first enter into high school. They're used to taking a smaller number of courses and course load than they are when they get into high school. That works, this is all tied together, that works with our MTSS support system. We have specific seminars for students that are struggling academically or socially emotionally, and by giving every student a seminar and offering MTSS the way we do every period of the day, we're able to first assign struggling students that are coming from high school, coming from middle school into the high school, into those MTSS seminars, and move them back and forth fluidly into a seminar, so they don't lose any ground in their academics. We don't, so in other words, if they're struggling in math, we don't pull them on a math to help them in math. They stay in math, and we pull them out of a seminar where they don't have that to get direct support from other teachers. Those are those three courses. If you look at number two, that required us to update the graduation requirements to reflect changes in PE and health. That's all that is. That's just attached to those three courses. Looking at three, we've added the language right below that regarding English lan, English learner education, so that we have a clearer definition or explanation of what we're doing for our English language learners. Never had music played for me before, man. Yeah, that means, that's the timer, yeah, that's the timer. Numbers, that was, that was good. Numbers four through, four through 11, I explained, 14, there's quite a few courses listed under that. You'll see Algebra II, Pre-Calc Honors, you'll see Pre-Calc Academics, Statistics, Marketing, Sociology, Anatomy and Physiology. What that shows is the growth in our dual enrollment program. We sat down at the table with Quincy College this past year, and we are working to expand and continually expand our dual enrollment opportunities for students to go along with our innovation pathways work that we're doing, so that we have more access for students to higher-level courses and the ability to gain college credit before they leave school as an avenue other than a high-stakes test such as your AP exams and things like that. Your number 15 and 16, those are corrections. When we were shifting the curriculum, we had to create the courses that would allow us to continue that education in math and that pathway that was appropriate for students who were caught in that shifting curriculum. Our curriculum's all squared away now, so now we're When we were shifting the curriculum, we had to create the courses that would allow us to continue that education in math and that pathway that was appropriate for students who were caught in that shifting curriculum. Our curriculum's all squared away now, so now we're getting rid of those because we're not offering those, and students are now back on track with the new pieces of curriculum that we have. Number 17, we are adding AP Microeconomics. 18 is AP Macroeconomics. So we're, we have the ability to add our two new AP courses, Micro and Macroeconomics, that fit in with the idea of getting students the economic education that we think they need before they leave. Um, Micro, obviously, being the small household-type things, Macro being the global, um, type of things. And it also offers opportunities for students educationally as far as AP credits go. Then number 29 and 30 are name changes. Um, our introductory physics will be, our introductory physics academic will be changed to conceptual physics, and that's gonna be a study of the basic principles. You'll see that in the deep, the description, it really lays out what the difference is. Basic principles for the conceptual physics, and then you get into practical applications for what used to be honors physics, which is now going to be physics, energy, and motion. And that has to do with practical application, problem solving, and requires a higher math content to it. And those are the changes. Um, the school council discussed it. With the work we've been doing on the Vision of the Graduate, they think these changes that we're making are moving clearly in the direction of what we believe we want to have for students here at Whitman Hanson Regional High School, and they approve it unanimously.
I'd be looking for a motion to approve the Program of Studies as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you for presenting this. I remember last year when you presented about, um, removing the midterms and final exams, there was conversation around, um, similar, uh, portfolio type of presentation, and I wonder if you can share anything, if it's being added to Program of Studies, or how that might be offered in lieu of those midterms and finals that some classes might be doing? Because I know I've had some parents ask about, you know, no exams.
No, that's, that's a good question about the whole portfolio idea, because that really leans towards project-based learning and assessments along that avenue. Um, right now, that's a, that's a whole different discussion on grading and how grading occurs. Um, and right now, we don't have any large setups like that where we have portfolio examinations. Um, where we're moving right now, I had mentioned the Vision of the Graduate, where we're moving with that, is we're coming up with areas or pillars under this new vision that will be ruled out with the strategic plan, that will then come out in the form of rubrics that are then folded into assignments in the classroom that will be tracked by Naviance, um, our software through our student support system, our, um, Student Support Center, and then we will be looking at displaying student work, because they'll so, they'll submit that to Naviance, so that we can see they're actually moving towards our vision for them. Um, and then you'll be seeing the projects and the assessments in the project form. We have some of our classes, but they're still, those are still mostly like your related art classes, um, and so forth, where they have projects as your types of assessments.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think Hillary goes first.
Oh, sorry. I can see over there.
Me? Uh, thank you, Dr. Jones, for this. Um, I just have a question about the two new classes, the AP Microeconomics and AP Macroeconomics. Are you thinking, what are the prerequisites for those classes at that point? Are there any, or are any students able to take them?
We don't have any prerequisites right now, and any students are able to take them.
Okay.
We're expecting, um, we had talked about it before, but then this thing called the pandemic hit, um, and we decided there were other things to focus on. But, um, we discussed them before, and we're looking, we're expecting that microeconomics will be filled before macroeconomics, because macroeconomics is conceptually a little harder. When you're talking about global markets and things, it's a little harder, harder to wrap your head around.
Good, good.
Sorry, Hillary?
Um, I had questions. I have two questions. Um, the first one, so for the foreign language, you know, we talked about that, if, do you offer independent studies? So if a student, so if a student, like, took a course online, like, from eighth grade to ninth grade, took Spanish one online, and I don't know how you would determine a proficiency, but I'm sure, and they could test out of Spanish two, so that by the time they were senior, they would be eligible to take the AP, or is that AP, or is that past AP? I'm sorry, the foreign language ones you were talking about? Those courses, the practicums?
It could be, it could be at the same time as AP, instead of AP, it could be after AP. Um, it's for a deeper study in, in that world language. Um, one of the things that Mr. Farrow mentioned, uh, that makes a lot of sense is before, when, when world language gets put into a middle school, it's gotta be put in, in, in a way that's appropriate, so that when students do leave middle school, they can't go into a Level Two world language at the high school, where that, because the way it was offered before, that, that wasn't happening. So students would be exposed to it, but then they'd come and they'd be in a Level One. What you heard Mr. Farrow talk about is, we, that will allow us to put students in Level Two, starting their freshman year, and move along further, so that if they do have a passion for the language or an interest in the language, they'll have that ability to move forward.
Um, the other question I had was about midterm exams also, um, and I have thoughts about them being, experiencing them.
Yeah, so one, one quick thing, I just wanna make sure we don't veer too far off. So, because I know your question was, we're in Program of Studies, but it was really about exams and grading, so...
Well, so mine isn't about grading, so I guess, and maybe this is what Donna's hearing, so if we have students who are going to college, they're going to have to take a big test eventually, right? And so I guess the question is, and I don't disagree with getting rid of midterms and finals, and I am probably, we're probably on the same team with that, um, but because I think that families are, my kid's not gonna be prepared for college, because they're gonna go to college in freshman year, they're gonna take a math class, and they're gonna have a midterm and a final, and they've never had to study for a big massive test before. So, and I, uh, project-based learning, that's not that, but where are there, in, in the Vision of the Graduate and things like that, are there plans to give students who are going to be going to college that experience? That's not taking AP, that's not an NCAS, because we know those are very different than having to take a midterm or final. That maybe is a bigger question, but I think that is gonna be a concern, because if you look historically around towns and schools around the South Shore, you've seen schools get rid of them for a couple of years, and then put them back in, and then get rid of them for that reason. Um, so, you know, that, that, I don't know if that's veering off of Program of Studies.
No, no, I agree. Yeah, I just, I, I just think, like, again, especially if we're getting, like, parental concerns, the, because I get, I, I always get this feedback, right?
Yeah.
Hey, I didn't know you were gonna talk about that. So the agenda tonight was Program of Studies. If we wanna have a conversation about grading, and testing, and finals, to me, we should put that on the agenda, so we give everyone the opportunity to present that and attend.
Well, I don't, I guess I don't understand why midterms and finals are in the Program of Studies. Wouldn't they be in the HAMPA? Or is that a Program of Studies?
They're both.
Okay. I guess...
Maybe that's part of the way of confusing seven.
Yeah, so that, that, yeah. So that's, that's my, again, I am probably 90% sure you and I are on the same team when it comes to midterms and finals. Um, but I know that that is certainly feedback. I know that that's a conversation that we have at my school. If we don't give them, how are we gonna prepare them for college? You know, um, I am very well aware that there are so many other ways that we can prepare students for college than taking a 90-minute exam, um, that's worth 10% of your grade. But, um, just, like, those conversations, like, how, how that's gonna be happening, so that for parents who might be concerned about that, like, how are, how is that getting across them that, yes, they're gonna be okay?
Hearing what you're saying, we're probably 95% of the same team.
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer that, Chair, or no? Should I?
So, I mean, I think it's up to you. I, I didn't catch the, that it was in the, um, Program of Studies, so if it's in there, then it's fine. I just, I just don't wanna shortchange anyone from how, like, if we wanna have a deep...
I don't think that's our, that's not our role.
If we wanna have a, commit a deeper conversation about that, like, I think we should, but I just wanna make sure we put it on the agenda, so if parents do wanna come, they can, that's all, that's all.
But I think that's the school council.
We're already there, so, I think, exactly. If you could do that, we could...
That's, the school council already...
Yeah, that superintendent's short. Sure, sure. I'm gonna put the music back on.
Get that music playing.
Sure.
As long as there's not a buzzer, it's all right. The short answer is, yes, that, that is a concern, and that is the holdover argument for most schools. How are we preparing our students for college? Completely ignoring the idea that there are many ways that we can prepare students for college besides that. But now, there are many colleges, um, except for maybe your Ivy Leagues, or your, your, your BCS, your private schools, many colleges are moving away from the midterm and final exam format, where students are able to opt out. Students can take a final if they didn't like their first grade in the course. Um, a lot of them are moving more towards that project-based learning that we were talking about, um, and handing things in like that. So we're not looking at, I mean, a lot of us are used to the Blue Book, right? Um, which gives me goosebumps just thinking about it, but, um, a lot of, a lot of your schools are moving away from that.
Yeah, good.
Awesome.
This is Chair.
Yes, Fred.
Uh, I had a question, actually, two questions.
Sure. Two. Not three, though, two.
Oh, we acknowledge, no worries. Uh, within the, uh, changes that we've made in what our offerings are, within the local area, are there courses that we're offering that are not available to students in other towns?
You know?
I mean, I can say yes.
I could say yes.
I would say there, I would say there are, but I can't, I can't list down A, B, C, D, E, F, um, but I would say, yes, we do have some differences.
Fred, just to answer that, the, our Program of Studies is very detailed, and what Chris is doing right now is pretty progressive, and other districts are gonna be catching up. The macro-micro piece is huge, the innovation pathways is huge, um, the combination of health-PE is, is exciting, um, because we have students that don't wanna engage in health and PE now, and it's a way, it's problematic to, to, to raise that bar for them, to have them, have an opportunity to do some different things is, is pretty good. So, yes, we, uh, you know, I know Hillary's in the same town that, that she teaches in that we go to. Our Program of Studies knocks Pembroke's, you know, it's, it's comparable, and we, we have some good things going on.
Yeah, so for that, I do wanna commend you, Dr. Jones. It's exciting when we're, when we're offering our kids more opportunities than available elsewhere. And the second part, uh, real quick, any budgetary impact?
To, to this? No, you're not, he's not looking for anything at this point. The budgetary impact would be if we decide to look towards modernizing our middle school, middle school, uh, foreign language to assist the high school moving forward.
Great, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Otherwise, we'll move to a roll call vote. Fred, while we got you?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Call vote, yes. David?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay. You're good.
Thank you very much.
And while you're up there, do you want, we're gonna go right into your global travel. Do you wanna present your, your field trip? That's all, they just have to, the committee has to approve your field trip for, uh...
For Spain.
For Spain, Portugal.
Um, I don't, I don't have any paperwork with me.
It's all right. You can just stand there and answer questions if you need to. You're just there, just in case somebody has a question.
Okay.
You don't have to present them.
Sure, there'll be a lot of... We're going to Spain and Portugal.
I just like to have them up there. Okay, just make them squirm. Okay, so, so, in the interest of sparing Dr. Jones, so, I think you all have it in your packets. It's the global trip, uh, to Spain, and there's no cost to the district. So, could I entertain a motion for the field trip? Second. Any questions for Dr. Jones?
Just to reiterate, this is the trip that Mr. Davidson runs pretty much annually.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know a tremendous amount of kids have had, uh, fantastic learning experience on these trips.
And there is no budgetary cost to the Whitman Hanson Regional School District. It's all funded by parents.
It's the same tour group that we use every single time.
Correct. Steve?
Can him and his sibling get a free pass?
Right. Catchy go. That's good, good catch.
You're from Portugal. Spain.
He's trying to get your sibling a discount. That's pretty good.
They get the Portuguese Portuguese.
Yes. Okay. Any other further discussion? All right, we'll go to a roll call vote. Fred?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Call vote, yes. David?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay. You were awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting back a little bit, uh, Dr. Shanae Weiss is here, our Director of MTSS and Equity, to provide you a report. Um, none of the principals are speaking today. Nikki's got, Nikki's got the podium. She's got a handout for you, but she's also gonna put it on the board for people to see at home.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, George, are you gonna, oh, you guys can...
Yes, I can do my thing.
It's riveting performance. Oh, I can do it, okay. All right. So, just so we're all, um, clear, that what we're doing here with our MTSS, um, framework is putting us in compliance with everybody's, uh, Every Student Succeeds Act, and we are following what Dussie has laid out as the, um, Dussie's MTSS blueprint, just so, um, you all are aware of that. I don't know. I got it, I got it. Um, so, um, we are, what I decided to do with this presentation was just to, um, focus on a couple of key areas. Um, curriculum being one, because we've made a substantial financial and professional contribution and, um, commitment to that area, so I thought it was one to update the committee. Um, so we are taking a systems approach to our curriculum. What that means is we are looking both our horizontal alignment as well as our vertical alignment. In terms of our horizontal alignment, we have our coordinators at our different levels, who are looking, making sure that students in the same grades are having like experiences. And then our vertical alignment involves making sure that our coordinators are meeting together to, um, ensure that when a student matriculates, that the skills that, um, that they have, we are hoping that they receive in the fourth grade is what they have, um, and that they're prepared for them in the fifth grade. So, um, we, our students meet, um, with our, pardon me, our coordinators meet, um, elementary, secondary, and our principals, um, are meeting together. Our system, our intervention teams are meeting together, making, um, data-driven decisions. Um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little flustered.
Breathe. Go to your safe space.
You're fine.
You're good.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, I, I presented last time, so I don't know what. Um, I think I was overthinking it. It was Chris's great performance, and a commendation from Fred that now. Um, so, so, to go back, we are, our, we have our intervention teams who are meeting together So, right now, we are in the process of our mid-year diagnostics. The preliminary results are very promising. What we have hoped our students are gaining and the growth we are seeing amongst our students. We want to pair that information with some qualitative data as well. So, we have this quantitative data that is supporting that what we are, what we are hoping that our students are receiving and achieving is bearing out. And now we want to pair that with the qualitative data and say, how are you feeling about your experiences in school? We've done it at the high school level with MCAS and it was really interesting. So, our students, we know that they did well. We did that MCAS presentation earlier in the year. We know that they're, they're meeting their MCAS requirements, receiving their high school diploma, which is wonderful, but how are they feeling? And the data that we got back was really interesting. Not surprising, anxiety, stress. So, we are taking that information and now making really informed decisions like how, what are our short-term plans on how to address that? What are our longer-term plans? So, our short-term, in the immediate, we were able to say to students, some of them thought it was affecting their GPA and we were able to say, no, it doesn't impact your GPA, it's an important assessment for sure, but it doesn't affect your GPA. They thought it was timed. It's not timed, you can take the day, relax. Long-term plans, we are looking at creating a softer start for them on those days, like, come in, we're going to provide you with breakfast, we're going to have some soft music, we're going to have some, you know, time for you to relax, maybe we'll do some calming strategies, meditation. So, this all came out of, yes, the quantitative data, we're doing what we need to do for our kids, but the qualitative data, what is your voice telling us? What are you sharing with us is letting us know how we can help. So, it was like, I didn't, these kids were not a plant, but I was like, well, we're doing that. Um, so, like, we're getting voice. The English learners were another group of students that we are trying to get the voice and it was great to hear. Um, our, our English learner numbers have grown substantially. We have just under 200 students in our district. So, we want to hear from them. We did focus groups with those kiddos. So, what is your experience? From that information, we learned, short-term plan, we're meeting, partnering with the Director of Police Services and we're going to introduce some lunch, different lunch options to represent the different student groups and the students are the ones giving us the recipes. So, we share that with need-be. So, short-term. Longer-term, the culture piece that Noah talked about, that came up. So, how do we incorporate more cultural diversity opportunities into our students' experiences? So, we're pairing and we're looking at that quantitative data and that qualitative data. So, going back, um, I don't want to go to data. So, that data piece is important and then, oh, and then professional development. We're using our district resources. So, we have some wonderful options that we have incorporated from the outside and we run wonderful experts, but we have a lot of in-district expertise as well and we are tapping into that. So, again, Noah commented or the students commented on wanting to know more about culture. Well, we're partnering with DUCI around this, but we're also tapping into our own expertise around culturally responsive classrooms and trying to work on those practices. We are tapping into, we have a growing English learner teaching population and those teachers bring a bunch of experiences from different schools, so now we've provided PD for other teachers here. Inclusive practices, we have a lot of experienced co-teachers, so we've created some PD opportunities for those as well. And then, because of that vertical and horizontal alignment, our coordinators are working together to not only say, what are we doing in PLA, what are we doing in math, but also, how does what we're doing in PLA can be reinforced in history, in science? So, we have a lot of great PD happening in district that we are creating through the MTSS framework. Now I got my stride.
There you go.
So, um, so overall, I wanted to touch on this. So, our MTSS framework, we are looking at curriculum, we are looking at intervention, we are looking at social emotional needs of our students, hearing their voice, getting that quantitative and qualitative data, pairing those together. Some great things happening. In addition, I wanted to just take my moment to talk to you a little bit about our English learners. So, as was shared earlier and it was really exciting to hear about the Portuguese-speaking students, we do have in our district now 12 languages represented. So, the majority are from Brazil and speak Portuguese. We are, as I said, just under 200 L's and F's. We are currently, right now, in the middle of our access testing, which means that we are testing for our students, our English learners, in proficiency for reading, writing, listening and speaking. This is, this is, they take MCAS due, so I can say it's the equivalent to the MCAS for that, but it is as important for these students. This is a big time for our students and I think our district is becoming more aware of the fact that this is significant for that group and we're being more mindful of that. So, again, like we want to do for MCAS, so starts welcoming those students, giving them, taking some other assessment requirements, often just creating space that helps them to do their best. We also, in terms of making sure that we're hearing voice, we have partnered with families and we've created our English learner parent advisory council. We had a meeting, our first meeting in October. We had our November, December meeting and our next meeting of next month and that is growing. We have close to 15 parents per town, that was pretty great. And then we have these pocket talks and talk, um, could you? Um, here's our.
Is it great thing I've done today?
Yes. Thanks, sir. So, we have, we purchase these pocket talks, which is a handheld translation. So, if a family comes in and there's nobody available, we can have translators available and it will do the translation. So, you can speak in English and they will talk back in the language. You can set it, has 145 languages. We also are utilizing Talking Points, which is a two-way translation app. So, you can type in English and it will translate behind the scenes to the family. So, it's great and it has increased our communication and our ability to reach our families. And then lastly, we were able to offer an adult English class in the fall to, under Title III, using Title III funds. And we will be offering another one in the spring and those are for our families and our parents and we're teaching them some English words to help them access education for their students, for their kids, but also community, how to make a doctor's appointment, how to make a dentist's appointment, how to come into the school and ask for what you need, who to ask for. So, those are some of the things that we are doing under MTSS and in my equity world right now. And so, I will just, um, so I will just say, thank you, thank you for, thank you for being patient with my wiggles there. And then, I just want to end with, it takes each of us to reach all of them. So, thank you for your time tonight. Any questions?
What's a FEL? I know when L is, but I don't know what it is.
Oh, great question, sorry. And I do this all, I use my.
There's so many acronyms everywhere.
Welcome to education. Glad.
Former English learner.
Former.
Former English learner. So, so going back to that access test, that's why it's so important. We're looking to see if our students have English proficiency.
Yep.
And in academic language and academic English, because they may be able to speak.
Speak, possibly read.
Right, but it's really all of, yeah, all of the.
Are they academically.
Learning. And so, there's a certain qualifying score that they need before we consider them a FEL. Yep, great question, thank you.
Excellent. Chris?
Yeah, just thank you very much. I love the program, appreciate all the efforts. It's just, I love the approach to this. I think this is something that, you know, whenever this type of thing is implemented, where you're, you're actually actively trying to learn, right? It's not like, to me, I think we get accustomed as parents or professionals, whatever, to accumulate this knowledge, we know best, here it is, right? When we can actually reach out and ask our kids, you know, to communicate their perspective back to us, I think those are the moments we learn and make the most strides as parents or teachers or whatever. So, I love this work and I think it's crucial to, when we can, to provide the best experience for our students.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I think too, I just, what these kiddos were saying, I was like, you know, they're seeing it and I was like, we're hearing you and we're trying to meet you where you are.
Don, yeah.
Yeah, outstanding presentation, thank you. Everything from the menu options and the food for diversity to the adult classes, didn't know we were even doing that community outreach, it's amazing. I'm going to ask you a question on the intervention slide on the front. It mentions compliance to early literacy K to at least three regulations mandated beginning. Can you elaborate on?
Yes.
July 2023 regulations?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, so coming out of DUCI, July 1, 2023, all schools K at least three will be required to screen at least twice, screening for dyslexia. And I think that that also came up earlier and we are already meeting that requirement and then exceeding it, because we're doing K to five and we are using, we're already using the required screeners and we're doing it three times. So, we are already in compliance with this mandate coming out. So, that's why, thank you for pointing that out. So, that's why that one is included in there. So, while I did this wonderful data and it helps us make informed, thoughtful decisions about students if they need intervention, it's going to be required soon anyways.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Laura?
I just have a question. So, looking at the data, is there a plan, and I don't know if this is a George question or a you question, to look at, like, I, my kids today came home and were like, I can't do my iReady because I'm doing my diagnostic, like, they're really amped about their diagnostics, like, really into it.
Yeah.
And so, is there any plan to look at, you know, if we're, if we're looking at the multi-tiered and we were, you know, in January, so MCAS is coming, like, high school is earlier, but this, I guess it goes for both, but is there a plan to look for the elementary students, fourth grade, I guess, particularly fourth, fifth grade, and then maybe middle school, but you don't do iReady in the middle school, right?
No, we do.
Okay, just kidding, never mind.
K to eight and then IXL nine.
Okay, so, because iReady is tied directly to the frameworks with MCAS. So, is there a plan to sort of like merge those data points to say, like, on this mid-year math diagnostic, this fourth grade student scored here, we're going to compare it to their third grade math score to see if they're improving or like to tier, you know, and I think I talked about this and I'd asked this question when you presented the MCAS data. I, a lot of our focus, as it should be, is on getting the students who are sort of below, above.
Right.
But also making sure we're getting the students who are in the middle, up, you know, so looking at it from all those points, is there a plan to do that?
Yes, so we are looking at data, yeah, yeah, the data analytics and creating a dashboard for just exactly what you're talking about. And because when our data teams are meeting, they want all that data at the ready and you don't want to be pulling all your different papers, right? So, we can pull up this dashboard that we can input, that we can input what you're talking about, their iReady scores throughout the years, because now we're having all of these data points on them, plus their MCAS scores. Whatever we want to ask for, we can pull up in the dashboard and then we're hoping, I have, we have to, I have to talk to the company we're using, because I would also like to pair anything, so we're doing that qualitative and we're going to be actually surveying our students five, five through 12 about, like I said, about how they feel about the curriculum and how they feel about instruction. And so, is there a way to actually pull in any of like those data points as well? I'm not sure, but yes, to your point, we are hoping so that when we have these data team meetings, we can look and see not just growth for one year, but growth over multiple years.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add is that, when you test these students in iReady in that diagnostic, you get two scores. You get the typical growth score and then you get the stretch growth score. And the stretch growth score is the one that compares best to MCAS preparation and then hopefully it merges with the MCAS scores. So, so that is why. But this Paul Maniudi is the person from data analytics who we've created these dashboards with, because if you really get going in these dashboards on students, you could then say, let's put attendance in there. So, then you could track how students are doing based on their attendance or their lack of attendance, based on their ethnicity, based on whatever data element that we track of students, you'd be able to track it to have this piece of, here's how they feel, here's when they come, here's how they're doing, and then here's where they're going.
You mean there are other variables to educating kids?
That's what we're getting.
No, I think that's great, that's awesome.
And I feel like I said, the preliminary, preliminary results are looking really good. And we're finding that our sixth graders are doing even better and they've had it because two-year-olds, they had it in the elementary, we only just purchased it for the middle school six to eight, but I think that's promising to say, oh, our sixth graders performing really strong, that's evidence to say, you know, this is working. And so, to create that long, that longevity, that vertical alignment all the way through so that we are building on the skills, the prerequisite skills that we want, I think it's trending and it's suggesting that we are making strides in that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So, I asked Nikki to do about eight minutes, but if you guys have a couple hours, if you wanted to hang out with Nikki for a while, this is really good stuff. I mean, and it's good, it's really good and we're looking at the big picture. And I think the key piece when, how they feel?
Yeah.
Nobody asks that question.
Yeah.
You know, and they're responding and we're making adjustments to that, so.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
That's, that's interesting. Relatively simple, I'm working on our annual report, district annual report to both towns. It'll be submitted on the 23rd of January. If any committee member wants to send me a blurb or anything like that, that, because you're members of the district, I can include that, we haven't done that in the past, but if you feel like you would like to give me something to add to my executive report or as a school committee thought, please get it to me, you know, before the 23rd. And sometimes I've been submitted it after the 23rd or adjustments to that after the 23rd. Both towns have been pretty flexible. I, in this annual report, I gather data from the entire district, so there's multiple areas, different schools are giving me things, the high school is giving me things, business, and then I do an executive summary. So, the district piece of the annual report is usually the biggest piece of the annual report, so I'm willing to take any type of paragraph, any type of information you want to give me for my executive summary.
Great. Okay. All right, we jumped around a little bit, but before we forget, or before I forget, we'll do the meeting minutes, because I'm going to miss them and then we'll be further behind. So, and I did ask Michelle, so I know there was a couple, we're doing, they're kind of transitioning through some cleanup, so some of these are a little bit older. I think goal is by next meeting to kind of get caught up on some of the older ones. So, I'd like, I'd love to take all three of these together, but that's probably too dangerous, so we'll do them one at a time.
Does it care?
Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
I do have, I would like to make a motion to amend the meeting minutes of June 22nd and the amendment would be to reflect that I was not absent.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, yes, so, how about, how about, can you, can you pull back the motion in the second, for a second? Because we haven't even, we have, we don't have a motion.
Right.
We don't even have a motion for the minutes yet. So, before, before we amend, I think, or if we want to amend it, that's fine.
I think you're okay.
Whatever is easy.
Yep.
So, how about this? I would entertain a, you guys okay withdrawing those motions?
Sure.
How about this? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2022 with the addition or removal of Fred as attending the minutes. So moved.
Second.
But I also have something for those minutes.
Start.
Sorry, I know, I tried to stop you before we got started. I tried to stop you.
All right, that's fine.
And what's going to you?
No, 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 so we have a motion with, what's the next event?
So, there's an executive session and I just want it noted that I left for the executive session. Like, if you look, if you, if you're really looking and you look at the notes, I'm not listed as someone voting, but I'm present in the meeting, so someone looking might just say like, oh, you know.
Would you like to make, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that it is noted in these minutes that I was not present for the executive session.
A motion to amend, great. Second. Great. So, any, oh, man.
Sorry.
Amendment to amendment. Any comments on the amendments to remove Hillary? Okay, well, we'll do this as a roll call vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, now that we have the amended motion, back to the motion to approve the minutes with the removal of Fred. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote. Fred?
Uh, just to clarify, with the removal of me being shown absent?
With the removal of you being shown absent, sorry. Yes, yes. Yep, sorry, thank you for the clarification, Fred. Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, glad we didn't try to do all three together.
No, right or wrong.
All right, so I would, unless anyone stood up, never mind. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 6, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, amendments?
I would assume we would want to have the same note in the notes that Hillary?
Nope.
Uh, was not present during executive session?
Nope.
No, you don't want that there?
No, because I was present during, for January, for July 6.
Oh, okay, oh, I got it.
I, I was present. It was a completely different executive session.
Okay, never mind, no, Fred, she's good.
Oh, it says collective bargaining, that's why, um.
No, it was for the Director of Business and Finance.
Collective.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good, Fred.
Nope.
No, you don't want that there?
No, because I was present during, for January, for July 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it.
I was present. It was a completely different executive session.
Okay. No, Fred, she's good.
Oh, it says collective bargaining, that's why I'm.
No, it was for the director of business and finance.
Collective.
Yeah.
We're good. We're good, Fred.
Okay, that's right.
You're good. You're good. All right. So we'll move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah. Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Glad we didn't probably do all three together.
All right.
So I would, unless anyone stood up, never mind. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, amendments?
I would assume we would want to have the same note in the notes that Hillary was not present during executive session.
Nope.
No, you don't want that there?
No, because I was present during, for January, for July 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it.
I was present. It was a completely different executive session.
Okay. No, Fred, she's good.
Oh, it says collective bargaining, that's why I'm.
No, it was for the director of business and finance.
Collective.
Yeah.
We're good. We're good, Fred.
Okay, that's right.
You're good. You're good. All right. So we'll move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, discussion, amendments?
I would assume we would want to have the same note in the notes that Hillary was not present during executive session.
Nope.
No, you don't want that there?
No, because I was present during, for January, for July 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it.
I was present. It was a completely different executive session.
Okay. No, Fred, she's good.
Oh, it says collective bargaining, that's why I'm.
No, it was for the director of business and finance.
Collective.
Yeah.
We're good. We're good, Fred.
Okay, that's right.
You're good. You're good. All right. So we'll move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Dare ask. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Okay. All right. We jumped around a little bit, but before we forget, or before I forget, we'll do the meeting minutes, because I'm going to miss them and then we'll be further behind. So, and I did ask Michelle, so I know there was a couple, we're doing, they're kind of transitioning through some cleanup. So some of these are a little bit older. I think goal is by next meeting to kind of get caught up on some of the older ones. So I'd like, I'd love to take all three of these together, but that's probably too dangerous, so we'll do them one at a time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
I do have, I would like to make a motion to amend the meeting minutes of June 22nd. And the amendment would be to reflect that I was not absent.
Second.
Okay. So, yes. So how about, can you pull back the motion in the second for a second? Because we haven't even, we don't have a motion. We don't even have a motion for the minutes yet. So before we amend, I think, or if we want to amend it, that's fine.
I think you're okay.
Whatever is easy.
Yep.
So how about this? I would entertain a, you guys okay withdrawing those motions?
Sure.
How about this? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2022 with the addition or removal of Fred as attending the minutes. So moved.
Second.
But I also have something for those minutes. Sorry. I know. I tried to stop you before we got started. I tried to stop you.
All right, that's fine.
I'll take my second.
So we have a motion with, what's the next event?
So there's an executive session and I just want it noted that I left for the executive session. Like if you look, if you're really looking and you look at the notes, I'm not listed as someone voting, but I'm present in the meeting. So someone looking might just say like, oh, you know.
Would you like to make?
I would like to make a motion that it is noted in these minutes that I was not present for the executive session.
A motion to amend, great.
Second.
Great. So any, oh man.
Sorry.
Amendment to the amendment.
Sorry.
Any comments on the amendments to remove Hillary? Okay. Well, we'll do this as a roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Now that we have the amended motion, back to the motion to approve the minutes with the removal of Fred, any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote. Fred?
Just to clarify, with the removal of me being shown absent?
With the removal of you being shown absent, sorry. Yes. Yes. Yep, sorry. Thank you for the clarification, Fred. Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Glad we didn't probably do all three together. All right. So I would, unless anyone stood up, never mind. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, discussion, amendments?
I would assume we would want to have the same note in the notes that Hillary was not present during executive session.
Nope.
No, you don't want that there?
No, because I was present during, for January, for July 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it.
I was present. It was a completely different executive session.
Okay. No, Fred, she's good.
Oh, it says collective bargaining, that's why I'm.
No, it was for the director of business and finance.
Collective.
Yeah.
We're good. We're good, Fred.
Okay, that's right.
You're good. You're good. All right. So we'll move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Upstate.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Okay. Move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess the point, Fred, and I think, again, we can go round and round, because I think we've already talked about this, is I think, if I remember correctly, it requires the approval and signature of the School Committee Chair and the Superintendent.
Correct.
And the School Committee Chair and Superintendent have said they will not sign it without a vote of the School Committee.
Correct.
Because we don't have any authority to do so. Unless the School Committee wants to take a vote to give us the authority to do so, which you're more than welcome to do, we do not have the authority to sign it. So that is our position, and we can go round and round and argue it, but frankly, the two people that have to make that determination have made theirs, so it is what it is. So if you would like to make a motion for the School Committee to authorize us to sign it with the approval of the Building Committee, by all means.
So I just wanted to let people know of those dates. The 24th is, is gonna be a meeting where we determine 5 through 8, 6 through 8, an auditorium, no auditorium, or really, the first vote is gonna be if we're supporting a renovation addition. So there, there's components of that, that is gonna be determined on the 24th.
So the question I have on that.
Sure.
Right, because I, I think there's a way to, hopefully, we all work together to get this done, is there, is there any preclusion from the School Committee members attending those meetings as just to listen?
Not at all.
So can you, because again, but to me, it's, I've shared the position, but I'd also, I've also shared the position that I think it's really important that if we have subcommittees and we empower them to do things, that we should take the time to listen to what they did and why they did it. So I would personally like to attend those meetings, just not in any engaged capacity, but just to listen to the discussion and figure out why are they voting the way they're voting? So I won't speak on behalf of anyone else, but I'd love to just, however we do it, we can get those invites and make sure they're cross-posted, just so we can attend those meetings and listen.
True.
Because to me, if we're not listening to those meetings, I don't want to be walking into a meeting on the 15th and we need to potentially vote something, and I'm trying to catch up with.
What happened?
You know, if, if they're gonna discuss it for two hours, then I'd rather be there for two hours here, so.
Are they recorded?
Yes.
For those of us who might.
But if we're meeting the next day, I just don't know.
Well, the meeting will be on the 24th.
It wasn't the 24th.
The votes can be on the 24th.
Yeah.
Then on the 14th is the initial approval of everything, so they are recorded.
But we'd always welcome School Committee members to attend our Building Committee meetings.
4:30 on the 24th.
4:30 on the 24th.
Not tight enough for me.
I agree with you.
All right, Budget Subcommittee, do you have anything, or what would you like to report?
Yeah, so to my understanding, the School Committee met in December to do a preliminary presentation. The Budget Subcommittee met last week to kind of regroup and talk about what we wanted to see going forward, take some of the lessons that we had from last year's presentation, and figure out what went really well and what we could approve upon, and right now, we're working on figuring out what type of messaging we'd like to put out there, what we want the presentation to look like, and after, we have our Joint Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow, we're going to regroup after we hear their feedback and figure out our plan of action from there, and I believe we're meeting next week, I forget the exact date and time.
Week after.
Week after, and from there, we'll follow up with everyone, and maybe we'll have an additional meeting, and by the first week of February, we should be good to go, so that's where we're at.
Good. Regional Agreement Committee, so we did meet on Monday. I would categorize it as a very cordial and productive discussion across the board. So basically, what we kind of did is we went around and kind of asked everyone to kind of share what each of their independent committees had for items that they thought we should discuss, so we kind of have a working list, I don't have it in, I have it in that folder. But basically, it was pretty consistent with what we talked about as a School Committee, if you remember, we had some, some feedback around just really invest the time to make sure we know what it says and how it says. We had brought up transportation, we had brought up representation, I think we also came up with, oh, we had brought up capital, and so in addition to that.
They brought up lease, lease agreements.
Yep.
And what was the one on the bottom? The last one that George drew up?
Yeah. But so it was, it was pretty consistent with what we came up with, and so we kind of have a working list of what we want to talk about, and then we kind of moved right into having conversations about transportation, and that conversation, which I think was, again, in my words, you guys, Chris?
Did you mention mandated busing in that conversation?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, great, yeah, so transportation, I think that conversation was helpful, because I think it filled everyone's understanding, right? We have Finance Committee members, we have Select Board members, they haven't been involved probably to the extent that we've been involved in some of those conversations, so I think there were always a lot of good questions to kind of help get an understanding. And then there was also, I think, an appreciation of what the administration is trying to do, and the role of the School Committee in transportation, in kind of trying to figure that out over the next month, and then kind of bringing that back to the Regional Agreement Committee, so that again, we're all kind of doing and working on the same page here, yeah.
Timing of billing?
Yes, that was it.
Oh, yes, that was the last item. And so the last item was our, the payment, how we.
Payment schedule from the town.
Do the assessments.
And it's, the payment schedule's off there, it doesn't really equate to when they receive their funds from taxes, so it puts a strain on the town.
Yeah, timing.
Timing, so we have to reevaluate that.
And then after transportation, we spent some time talking about representation. I think it was the consensus of the Regional Agreement Committee to maintain the population methodology, so, but there was a idea floated that we wanted to bring back to all of you that there was some concern about the, I'm gonna try and say this correctly, so Chris and Jeff, jump in if I don't share the sentiment correctly, but basically, that the role of the School Committee should be apolitical when it comes to the town representation. So it was actually a good conversation, right, like, you know, everyone as a group was kind of, hey, we don't want to get in this situation where, whether it's 6-4, 7-3, that we're stuck voting Hanson versus Whitman, because kind of the general consensus was the role of the people here are for the students, not primarily to represent their town.